Please rise as you are able. I now call this meeting of City Council to order.
The city of Barrie acknowledges the traditional territory of the Anishnaab people, which include the Odawa, Ojibwe, Parawatami nations collectively known as the Three Fires Confederacy. We also acknowledge the Oneet Nation Yaron who occupied these lands prior to the middle of the 17th century. We're dedicated to honoring indigenous history and culture and recognize the enduring presence of indigenous peoples on this land. We're committed to moving forward in the spirit of reconciliation and respect with all First Nations, Métis, and Inuit people. You may be seated. Welcome to Barrie City Council. We have already gone through our executive committee tonight, as well as the general committee and approved the budgets for the partners of the city of Barrie. And so we're actually going to go into one of our, one of the things I like most about our council meetings, which is the comments from our outgoing student mayor. So we're going to start with Michelle Locafor, but before I do, I just wanted to share with you a little comment that she said to me when we were sitting there. I said, "How's your day going?" And she said, "It's sad." And I said, "Well, that's a good thing because it means you had a good time and you're going to miss it here." So thank you to all the staff who made that happen. And Michelle, we're going to start with you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Michelle Locafor. And before I even begin, I would like to thank Tracy McDonald for informing Camille and me on what to expect before our first council meeting. Thank you Deputy Mayor for welcoming us with open arms and for supplying me with those lifesavers because they played a huge role in clearing up my stuffy nose. Now, when I look at these lifesavers, I'll always be reminded of you. I would also like to thank all the council boards for answering the questions I had after each meeting. Your advice really broadened my perspective on things. And lastly, thank you Mayor Nuttall for actually in, for giving me the opportunity to be here and for being the driving force in the work being done for Barrie. I would also like to thank the fire chief, the fire station chief, and the Barrie police chief for such a great tour that we experienced yesterday, me, Camille, and her classmates. I had a very fun time and it was such an experience I would like to relive again. Through this experience, I have learned how laws are passed and how parties negotiate even when they have different opinions. I've also seen how important respect, patience, and open mindedness are even when making decisions that affect a community. Watching everyone work together showed me that leadership is about listening, understanding, and finding common ground. I will take what I've learned here and use these skills in the real world, real world, to help ensure that people are kept safe and sound. Thank you very much.
Mom, do you want to come down to take a photo? You can come down if you'd like. So it's certainly my honor to present Michelle on behalf of Barrie City Council and the city of Barrie with your recognition and participation as the city of Barrie's student mayor, representing St. Peter's Catholic Secondary School. Michelle, all the best in the future and thank you for sharing the last few weeks with us. You did a great job.
My pleasure.
Give this to you and we'll let mom do a photo here. Wonderful. Sitting down just to get up again, but that's okay. I'd like next to invite Camille Chorakufa to come and give her speech representing Hillcrest Public Elementary School. And I had a quick peek of the speech beforehand. It's excellent. So really looking forward to this. Over to you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Camille Chorakufa, and this year I had the chance to serve as Barrie student mayor. When I first walked into a city council meeting, I won't lie, it was intimidating. Everyone seemed so professional. The room felt serious and I sat there thinking, "Okay, don't mess this up." But after a bit, once I understood the routine and met the staff, the whole atmosphere shifted. They were relaxed, welcoming, and honestly cracking jokes like it was a comedy show. Even though I was not the most talkative person around new people, it felt like an open space where even a student could sit and be acknowledged without being treated childlike. One of the coolest things I got to see was the process of how decisions are actually made. Like when they debated back and forth about third-party advertising billboards, I think on ESSA. It sounds small, but watching them go from discussion to disagreement to finally agreeing, it was interesting to see how something we can just see in the city actually gets decided in the first place. I also had the chance to tour both the fire department and the police station. And at the police station, I learned that body cameras and not tasers, which I generally thought at first, so that was a funny moment. Their building is huge, like 120,000 feet square. So we did a lot of walking, but it was really cool to see how everything works behind the scenes. The fire department was a bit more hands-on. We got to climb onto the trucks, touch things, and see where they work and sleep. Hearing that they work full 24-hour shifts with barely any sleep and then getting a day or two off afterward gave me a new level of respect. None of their jobs were like the dramatic movie version. They're just big softies who care deeply about the city and generally love what they do. Overall, this whole experience made me feel more responsible, more involved, and honestly proud. Proud to see how much work goes into running a city. Decided that I got to be a part of it and determined to do more in the future. And for the next student mayor, I'll leave you with this piece of advice. Don't fall asleep in those meetings. I know it's a lot of talking and you just might want to go home and play Fortnite, but trust me, it's a valuable experience. Thank you.
Okay, so Camille, on behalf of City Council and the city of Barrie and our staff, we'd like to recognize you for your participation tonight and over the meetings as the city of Barrie's student mayor for Hillcrest Public School. Thank you so much and wish you all the best in the future. Do you still have the natural garden out back in the school there? The natural garden? They're planting a whole bunch of different things a couple of years ago?
Beautiful, beautiful.
Okay, we are now going to move into the swearing-in of our new student mayors. And so it's at this point, I would like to invite, sorry, to this point, I'd like to invite Sarah Anish, representing Steel Street Public Elementary School, and Tracy McDonald, Deputy City Clerk, to do the official swearing-in ceremony.
Having been elected to the office of student mayor for the period of December 3, 2025 to January 28, 2026, do solemnly promise and declare...
I, Sarah Anish, have been elected to the office of student mayor for the period of December 3, 2025 to January 28, 2026. Do solemnly promise and declare...
That I will truly, faithfully, and impartially exercise this office to the best of my knowledge and ability.
That I will truly, faithfully, and impartially exercise this office to the best of my knowledge and ability.
That I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a biased, corrupt, or in any other improper manner.
That I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a biased, corrupt, or any other improper manner.
That I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act.
That I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct, indirect, or accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act.
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to His Majesty, King Charles III.
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to His Majesty, Charles III.
And I make this solemn promise and declaration, conscientiously believing it to be true and knowing that it is of the same force and effect as if made under oath.
And I make this solemn promise and declaration, consciously believing it to be true and knowing that it is of the same force and effect as if made under oath.
Well, welcome, Sarah, to Barrie City Council. We just have some documents. You were supposed to read them before the meeting started, but we'll, we'll let it slide this time. We'll introduce Barrie City Council to you, Sarah. So we'll start with Ward 1 and go around the table.
Well, congratulations, Your Worship, and welcome to council. My name is Claire Reepma. I'm the council for Ward 1. And Steel Street Public School is in Ward 1.
Congratulations and welcome, Sarah. I'm Craig Nixon, Ward 2 councillor.
Welcome to the team, Sarah. I'm Anne Marie Kungle, Ward 3 councillor.
Hello, Sarah. My name is Amy Corsair, and I'm the Ward 4 councillor.
Good evening and welcome to council. I'm Deputy Mayor Thompson and the Ward 5 councillor.
Welcome to the council. My name is Nguise Nguise, Ward 6 councillor.
Welcome, Sarah. I'm Gary Harvey, the Ward 7 councillor.
Congratulations and welcome, Sarah. I'm Jim Harris, councillor for Ward 8.
Welcome to council, Sarah. I'm Bryn. I'm the Ward 10 councillor.
And my name is Alex Nuttall. I serve as mayor in the city of Barrie. We also have councillor Sergio Morales. He's not with us tonight, but I'm sure you'll meet him next week at the council meeting there. One of the fun facts I always give, which these folks have heard too many times, is that I too was a student mayor over at St. Peter's. So I love this program. I think it does a lot. And you've heard from the other outgoing student mayors how much of an impact it was on, on them as well, on Michelle and Camille. So welcome to Barrie City Council. And we'll move forward in the agenda into the confirmation of the minutes circulated November the 19th, 2025. Are there any corrections from members of council? I'm seeing none, so they are adopted as they were printed and circulated. There's no awards and recognition this evening, reports from officers, deputations, tax applications, or communications. So we're going to move into the committee reports. Deputy Mayor, that's you.
Thank you, Mayor Nuttall. Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Harvey. That's Section A of the General Committee Report dated November 26, 2025, now circulated, be received.
It's moved by Deputy Mayor Thompson, seconded by councillor Harvey. The Section A of the General Committee Report dated November 26, 2025, now circulated, be received. 25G239 reported to the Affordability Committee dated October 29. 25G240 reported to the Affordability Committee dated November 12. 25G241 reported to the Infrastructure and Community Investment Committee dated November 19, 2025. Any questions or comments on the motion on the floor in Section A? See none. All those in favor? It carries. Deputy Mayor.
Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Harvey. That's Section B of the General Committee Report dated November 26, 2025, now circulated, be adopted.
It's moved by Deputy Mayor Thompson, seconded by councillor Harvey. The Section B of the General Committee Report dated November 26, 2025, now circulated, be adopted. This is 25G242, report back culture plan update. 25G243, establishing and regulating Barrie Fire and Emergency Services Bylaw Update. 25G244, Street Names Hewitts Central Draft Plan of Subdivision Ward 10. 25G245, Street Names Hewitts Gate Phase 5 Draft Plan of Subdivision Ward 10. 25G246, Speed Limit Review, ESSA Road, Ward 7. 25G247, Proposed Employment Development Community Improvement Plan, CIP, and 25G248, The Red Light Camera Program. Any questions or comments from members of council with regards to Section B on the floor? I'm seeing none, so all those in favor? And it carries.
Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Harvey. That's Section C of the General Committee Report dated November 26, 2025, now circulated, be adopted.
It's moved by Deputy Mayor Thompson, seconded by councillor Harvey. The Section C of the General Committee Report dated November 26, 2025, now circulated, be adopted. This is 25G249, Electric Vehicle Supply Equipment Update. Any questions or comments from members of council? I'm seeing none. All those in favor? It carries. Deputy Mayor Thompson.
Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Harvey. That's Section D of the General Committee Report dated November 26, 2025, now circulated, be adopted.
It's moved by Deputy Mayor Thompson, seconded by councillor Harvey. That's Section D of the General Committee Report dated November 26, 2025, now circulated, be adopted. This is 25G250, Kemp Fest Consultation. Are there any questions or comments from members of council? I'm seeing none, so on Section D, all those in favor? And it carries. Deputy Mayor.
Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Harvey. That's Section E of the General Committee Report dated November 26, 2025, now circulated, be adopted.
It's moved by Deputy Mayor Thompson, seconded by councillor Harvey. The Section E of the General Committee Report dated November 26, 2025, now circulated, be adopted. This is 25G251, 2025 Watersport Pilot Project Results, Wards 1, 2, 8, and 10. 25G252, 2025 Capital Project Status Report. I believe there's an amendment coming. Over to councillor Hamilton.
Thank you, and through you, I'd like to put amendment on the floor. It is moved by myself and seconded by Deputy Mayor Thompson. That motion, 25G251 of Section E of the General Committee Report dated November 26, 2025, concerning the 2025 Watersport Pilot Project Results, in Wards 1, 2, 8, and 10, be amended by the following. That due to the success of the pilot project in 2025 and notwithstanding the city's procurement bylaw, all vendors that participated in the 2025 pilot project be permitted to continue the operation for the 2026 boating season. And that staff and corporate facilities, the marina, issue and complete an RFP to implement a permanent watersport vendor process in time for the 2027 boating season with a term for the vendors of one year with an option to renew for a three-year term. And that existing vendors participating in the pilot project be invited to submit a bid for the request for proposal. I can speak to that.
Go ahead. The floor is yours. Actually, I have to read it first, don't I?
Oh, yes.
I thought I got away with... It's moved by councillor Hamilton and seconded by Deputy Mayor Thompson. That motion, 25G251 of Section E of the General Committee Report dated November 26, 2025, concerning 2025 Watersport Pilot Project Results, Wards 1, 2, 8, and 10, be amended by the following. That due to the success of the pilot project in 2025 and notwithstanding the city's procurement bylaw, all vendors that participated in the 2025 pilot project be permitted to continue their operation for the 2026 boating season. The staff and corporate facilities, marina, issue and complete a request for proposal to implement a permanent watersport vendor process in time for the 2027 boating season with a term for the vendors of one year with an option to renew for a three-year term. And that existing vendors participating in the pilot project be invited to submit a bid for the request for proposal. Any questions or comments from members of council? I've got councillor Reepma. Oh, sorry. The floor is to councillor Hamilton first, then we'll go to councillor Reepma. But maybe she'll answer your question before you ask it.
Perhaps, perhaps. Thank you, and through you, Mayor Nuttall. I just want to thank staff for putting together such a well-conducted review and summary of the Watersport Pilot Project. As you can see from the report, it was very successful and there was a wide variety of feedback that was sought, both from the downtown marina, Brentwood Marina, the public, city staff. And I also want to recognize the significant upfront investments that were made with the existing vendors as part of the pilot and the strong relationships that seem to have been built over the course of the last year. So the reason I'm putting this motion forward is that, in my opinion, moving to a direct RFP right now disrupts the existing relationships and the work that was done to achieve that level of success. And I think, you know, the partnership really demonstrated what a lot of us were concerned about was outset was water safety. And I think they were able to exceed our expectations based on the review that was done. So a one-year extension protects the stability or continuation. It supports the businesses that already stepped up and made these initial investments, but it still maintains alignment with our procurement policy. So I'm suggesting a one-year extension and then moving forward with an RFP. And that RFP would be based for a one-year period in hopes that it might limit new vendors from coming to the table because there is that initial upfront investment. And hopefully, again, we can get some stability and continuity with the success of the existing pilot program and partnerships that have been developed.
Thank you councillor Hamilton. Are there any questions or comments from members of council? Go ahead councillor.
And Mr. Mayor, I think my question is more to do with process than with the amendment. I'm happy with the amendment. It makes perfect sense. However, does this also include the recommendations of staff report with respect to things like Transport Canada, that staff were going to get involved with Transport Canada, and as well, there are changes to the number of permits for the boats that are recommended? So, I mean, I'm happy with the recommendations of staff report combined with this amendment. I'm just confused whether the changes recommended by staff are going to be implemented for this coming year, save and accept the bidding process.
Thank you. I'm going to ask the mover of the motion, or I'll ask maybe Mr. Schmidt, if you could answer that on the rest of the items, save and accept the actual RFP going out right away.
Through you, Mayor Nuttall, to councillor Reepma. It's staff's understanding that those recommendations that are put forward by staff would be moving forward in addition to, should this amendment move forward tonight?
Okay, that's fine. Any other questions or comments on the amendment? Seeing none, I'm going to call the vote on the amendment. All those in favor? And it carries. On the main motion as amended, are there any other comments or questions from members of council? I'm not seeing... Oh, councillor Harris?
You know what? Thank you, Mayor Nuttall. Maybe quickly, I think, and I didn't go back to look at the last report from the previous year, from the, but the difference in the outcome in a year. So I just wanted to give credit to everybody involved as far as, you know, I think there might have been a term used, organized chaos in year one. And this is far from that. This is really great. The personal watercraft was over off of the Tiffin Boat Launch, just on the Ward 8 side. No complaints, no concerns received from me. I just wanted to say this was a really great effort as far as taking a new idea that had some potential, didn't quite work great in its first iteration, but really did land well. So I want to thank everybody involved in this because the outcome is really favorable. So thank you.
Thank you councillor Harris. Any other comments or questions? I'm seeing none. All those in favor? Carries. Deputy Mayor.
Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Harvey. That's Section F of the General Committee Report dated November 26, 2025, now circulated, be adopted.
It's moved by Deputy Mayor Thompson, seconded by councillor Harvey. The Section F of the General Committee Report dated November 26, 2025, now circulated, be adopted. This is 25G253, review of the signed bylaw 2018-029.
Thank you, Mayor Nuttall. I need to declare a potential pecuniary interest. As a CEO of a charitable not-for-profit in the city of Barrie, I could potentially benefit from this as it relates to reduced cost. So I will not vote on the matter and will roll my chair back from council.
Thank you. And councillor Harris?
Thank you, Mayor Nuttall. And similarly, I will have, be declaring conflict as I, as a CEO of a charitable nonprofit organization, I could potentially benefit from the change to this bylaws. So I will not be voting out. Put my chair back.
Are there any other members of council who'd like to comment on the matter at hand with regards to the signs? Seeing none. All those in favor? And it carries. Madam Clerk, the conflicts have been noted?
Yes, Mayor Nuttall, they have been.
Thank you so much. Okay. I just, just want to take a moment. The conflicts of interest, I have them, everyone has them around the table. They're not, just for folks at home in the audience and our student mayors, it's not a bad thing. It's actually a good thing. Because if somebody has perhaps something in their private life that's associated with something we're working on here at City Hall, they say, "Hey, I'm not going to vote on this." And that's just part of good governance and it's good for the city. So I just wanted to highlight that. The, the term conflict of interest sounds so combative and negative, but it's actually a really good thing and speaks really highly about our democracy. Deputy Mayor, I think there's another one.
Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Harvey. That's Section G of the General Committee Report dated November 26, 2025, now circulated, be adopted.
It's moved by Deputy Mayor Thompson, seconded by councillor Harvey. The Section G of the General Committee Report dated November 26, 2025, now circulated, be adopted. This is 25G254, memorandum, county of Simcoe Budget. 25G255, memorandum, sandbox annual report and request. And 25G256, memorandum, county of Simcoe Municipal Services Agreement. Are there any questions or comments with regards to this motion on the floor?
Maybe just a point of clarification. Because it's directional and it's not voting on an outcome, I believe I'll still abstain from voting because it talks about, I don't believe I need to. I don't believe there's a conflict of interest because it's process, not outcome driven as a decision. So I will be voting on the matter.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments around the table? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion on the floor? It carries. That is the end of our, end of our sections and of general committee. We're going past defer business and direct motions, unless it's a direct motion, presentation, there's none. So we're at inquiries. Deputy Mayor, you had an inquiry. Do you want to say it now?
Thank you, Mayor Nuttall. And this is through you to the clerk. Last week, there was some conversation in regards to the sign that this property, there could all possibly be, you know, a conflict if they were to put in a zoning application and all that. And after speaking with the clerk and just doing some research, is it fair to say, Madam Clerk, that if there was ever an application towards this property, that the pilot project could be ended at the will of council?
Through you, Mayor Nuttall, to Deputy Mayor Thompson. Yes, council can end the pilot project at any time. And as well, staff can end the project at any time if they don't meet the conditions that were approved by council last week.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. Any other inquiries for our public service this evening? Councillor Hamilton.
Thank you, Mayor Nuttall, and through you. Just given the snow that we received last week and I guess what's coming this week, I think all of us have received a number of emails about the windrows, is that what they're called, windrows, at the end of our driveways when the snowplow goes by and builds up. And I know this happens every year that we get questions that why doesn't city have the special equipment that could perhaps come behind the trucks and move it? And I just, I want...
And I just, I wonder if it'd be a good opportunity for staff again to just speak to the costs associated with that, some of the decisions and thought that's put into whether or not we pursue this or not pursue this. So looking, I think, to Dave, if he's, oh. Oh, shoot, he was at General Committee and not at council. I'll put this forward to staff, then someone at staff that perhaps wants to speak.
Why don't we, why don't we bring it next week when Dave's going to be here?
Be here?
And unless somebody has it off the top of their head, which I'm guessing.
You know, let's do that because I know he had pulled some information together and maybe we'll put together, and I would ask all councillors, if you guys have any specific questions that you've been getting. I know there's some in relation to sidewalks as well, and it seems like the equipment is too large for some of the sidewalks. So send them my way or send them Dave's way, and perhaps we can next week or even put together a memo outlining some of this information for residents.
Dave's online. He's ready for you.
Dave's online. Way to go, Dave.
Magically showing up.
In two thousand seventeen, costs for doing windrows.
Sorry, Mr. Ferrari, just if you could start again because we just started hearing you right now. So if you can start from the beginning there.
My apologies. Mayor Nuttall and members of council, we'd be happy to bring back some of those numbers for you. You know, initial reports, we're looking at about ten million dollars to provide that service. We did a memo to council back in two thousand seventeen, and subsequently, we just update those numbers every couple of years, so it's quite an expensive endeavor to offer that. What I can also offer is the municipalities that do offer that project or that program are all in a GTA. So as you know, if you've driven down Highway nine or south of Highway nine, there's no snow down there. So their costs and the way they can offer those services, little bit different. Once the snowbanks get up past four or five feet, the machinery that they use no longer works. So we could put that in the memo as well. And anything else that, you know, is associated with that, there are some capital costs, machinery that you have to buy, et cetera. So we'd be happy to have that ready for you for next week.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I appreciate the answer tonight. I think that helps a lot of us in responding to our residents. But yeah, I think perhaps a follow-up memo, and again, I would guess any other questions that are coming through, if maybe we can put together a memo not only for us but for the public, I think it's helpful for them to have some of that information as well.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Thanks, Mr. Ferrari, for being able to provide that response. And I'm going to go over to councillor Harvey.
Yeah, actually, thank you, Mayor Nuttall. It's actually a follow-up to Mr. Ferrari, if he's still on the line. Just recently, I saw a graphic circulating online, and it actually kind of makes sense. So what they were encouraging people to do to counteract these windrows is to actually clear the first few feet of your front lawn so that way, as the plow goes down the road, it has the, it's got somewhere to fall other than just in your driveway. I was just wondering if Mr. Ferrari could speak to that, whether he's found that that is a good tactic for people to use? Because I only just recently saw it and had never heard of it, and once I looked at it, I thought, that makes sense.
Mayor Nuttall and members of council, absolutely. We offer those tips online. So what you do is, as you're looking out at the street, I would put all the snow or shovel that little area to the right side of your driveway. So you can also use that little area to store your garbage and recycling carts. And in that way, when the plow comes by, it's not pushing it into your driveway. So it helps out. It offers a place to put your carts. So if you could do both sides of the driveway, leave a little bit of space there for snow storage. And another helpful tip is, as you're clearing your driveway, try not to throw everything sort of down near the end of the driveway. Load your lawn up as much as you can, and that way it also provides better sightlines as you're backing out of your driveway.
Thank you so much. I have councillor Courser.
Now that we're all discussing this, I was going to save this, but I wanted to make, through you, to staff or to to Mr. Ferrari. Is there, what are the legalities around shoveling your snow onto the road? I've been receiving a lot of people emailing me complaining of people doing it and people emailing me demanding that they should be allowed to do it. So I'm wondering if it's the same as it would be, I believe it's the same as it would be for raking leaves, that you cannot shovel your snow onto the road. Is that correct?
Mayor Nuttall and members of council, that's absolutely correct. It's part of the, our nuisance bylaw. So our bylaw officers will visit you if they catch you pushing snow out onto the roadway. It's also very dangerous, and depending on where you are, it's against the Highway Traffic Act. You know, you put windrows out onto the roadway, you know, somebody hits it, loses control of their car, and, you know, you can have an accident. So we discourage doing that, and as I said, it's actually against the law.
Thank you. I think that we will have a very interesting report and conversation coming back next week because I know that there's a lot of questions that are being asked. And I'd like to thank councillor Hamilton for bringing up this conversation as well.
Thank you, councillor Courser, and yes, thank you, councillor Hamilton, for bringing this up this evening. Are there any other inquiries? I'm seeing none. Announcements, councillor Kungl?
Nope.
Should I? Shouldn't I? Should I? I'm going to make one because you opened the door for a second time. We had the Communes in Bloom Committee meeting on Tuesday night, and again, just want to express to communications and the team there that put together a brilliant report. We went through it line by line. It was exceptional with the award, but there are so many aspects of that that actually have relatability to all of our standing committees and advisory committees that we will be sending a copy out to each member of council. We do invite you to look at, one, sharing that, because there are a lot of pieces that really are a result of the work being done, accessibility, the St. Vincent Park, to other aspects around heritage and other pieces. But if we can actually look at that and put them in your plans for next year on some of the recommendations would be, I think, great, and we look forward to welcoming judges back in August, July of two thousand twenty-six.
Perfect. Thank you, councillor Kungl. Councillor Harris.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to quickly announce that on December sixteenth at six P.M. at the Allendale Rec Center, there will be a town hall that will feature you and myself. And so I look forward to Allendale residents coming out and Ward eight residents coming out and having a chat. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you so much, councillor. Looking forward to it. So with no other announcements, I'll jump into my Baby Drive. This is a more date. Look at this, right in front of Allendale Rec Center. It couldn't be timed better. Baby Drive is now open to the traffic, which marks the completion of major construction on Baby Drive Transportation Improvement Project. Final paving restoration is anticipated for the spring. But for further information, you can visit berry.ca/roadwork. During the holiday season, show your support for downtown Berry businesses while enjoying two hours of free on-street parking in December. For further information, please visit berry.ca/parking. Residents can register for winter recreation and culture programming starting on December the ninth, and non-resident registration begins on the sixteenth of December. The city's rec and culture team is offering special holiday drop-in activities, workshops, winter break, camps, and events. For further information, please visit play.berry.ca. Delivery of this, delivery of the city's two thousand and twenty-six waste reduction calendars to households began this week. Residents are reminded to check their mail, for their calendar, and for further information, you can visit circularmaterials.ca/berry. And we're going to move into the bylaws. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Nuttall. Moved by myself and seconded by councillor Harvey. Leave be granted to introduce the following bill, and this bill be read a first, second, and third time, and finally passed Bill one twenty.
It's moved by Deputy Mayor Thompson, seconded by councillor Harvey. Leave be granted to introduce the following bill, and this bill will be read a first, second, and third time this day and finally passed Bill one twenty. Any questions or comments from members of council with regards to the bill? I'm seeing none. All those in favor? It carries. Deputy Mayor Thompson.
Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Harvey. Leave be granted to introduce the following bill, and this bill be read a first, second, and third time on this day and finally passed Bill one twenty-one, the confirmation bylaw.
It's moved by Deputy Mayor Thompson, seconded by councillor Harvey. The confirmation bylaw, the leave be granted to introduce the following bill, and this bill will be read a first, second, and third time this day and finally passed Bill one twenty-one. Any questions or comments from members of council? Seeing none. All those in favor? It carries. Do I have a motion to adjourn from councillor Harris and councillor Nguusi? All those in favor? It carries. We're adjourning at seven forty-six.